It is six fifteen, which isn't six o'clock. My apologies for starting late. We had a session upstairs that ran a little long this evening. At this time, I will call the regular City Council meeting for Perry for Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 to order please. We have a call. Item three is the invocation of the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you are able, please rise. For the invocation, I would like to call on Reverend Robert Jones for his invocation at this time.
Let's break. Let me follow up with thank you today. Thank my members who attended the City of Perry. As we ask that this meeting is conducted, it will be a meeting in glorified your name and should give us the wisdom to lead the City of Perry in the way that just best represents the right name and the brave. Amen.
I'd like to call on Councilman Riley Hunt to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Melman. Item four, our community partner updates. Is there a community partner with us tonight who wishes to give Council an update at this time?
I already signed one. I don't want to sign with this one.
Thank you. Item five, our appointments to boards, commissions, and authorities. Let me note that we have an item twelve on the agenda that with the concurrence of council, we have decided to move it to this particular item. It will become item five D. But for now, item five A is an appointment to the Housing Authority for the City of Council is in receipt of a letter from Mr. Ed Beckham, the chairman of the board for the Housing Authority for the City of Perry. It's very short. Mayor, fair and thoughtful, we have a candidate for commissioner for the Perry Housing Authority. Therefore, will you please appoint Mrs. Jane Thomas as commissioner for a five-year term beginning September 20, 2017? This is the date of the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and I very much like to have Ms. Thomas on board at that time. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. In this matter, excuse me. Counsel, based on this letter of recommendation, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we appoint Mrs. Jane Thomas as commissioner for the five-year term as requested. Does a motion and second in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item five B, which was formerly item twelve, is, was under the other business supplemental agenda, appointments to boards, commissions, and authorities. Under item one to that, there is an appointment to the Perry Area Convention and Visitors Bureau by Councilmember Randall Walker. Mr. Walker, are you prepared to make this appointment at this time?
Yes, I am.
The floor is yours.
Mayor, we had a recommendation as outlined in the legislation from the Chamber of Commerce, and we've accepted that nomination of Ms. Trish Coser. Ms. Coser designed in downtown Perry has consented to serve on that.
Very good. Is this, Mr. Melman, one of those items that require a vote of council, or we can accept this recommendation by affirmation?
It comes from the particular member of council as well.
Got it. Counsel, you have heard the recommendation that Mr. Walker has enumerated. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we appoint Ms. Coser for this particular term for the Perry Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Authority as described. There's a motion and a second in the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Very good.
Thank you for letting me have a nine key in the board.
Item six, our citizens with input. Is there anyone present who wishes to address council on any matter of this time? Thank you. Item seven is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCGA Section 36-67A-3C. Item seven eight, the city is proposing to upgrade its water supply system to provide additional capacity and to replace the older water treatment plant with a new one. Decommission two wells and add two new wells with new connections to the existing system. Mr. McMurray.
Yes, Mr. Counsel. Let me grab the clicker here. Of course, most everyone knows me, Kevin Murray, representing the City of Perry in the Engineering Department. I'd like to welcome Mr. Sam Cargill. He's a consultant hired by Constantine Engineering to help with this project. First, I'd like to let everyone know that I have a copy of the environmental information document if somebody needs to review that or has any questions regarding this information. Let's see. How can I get this?
Turn it on.
Okay. First, I'd like to discuss the need for this project real quickly. As you can see here, this is the old water plant there highlighted in blue, and it has, it has served City of Perry for at least seventy-five years. Is in need of repair or replace. The city has done much research on this facility and decided that a replacement is needed. One of the creekside wells have already failed and is out of production. Two new wells will be required to replace this old water plant and give the city to its 2030 projected demands that we need. So that's what we're looking at, the need for this project. We did have some alternatives to consider. There was really not a good option here for buying water from the county. It just didn't seem practical or feasible. The city did look at six different sites, big enough to accommodate two wells and a new water plant, along with the rest of the improvements. The city, as you know, has purchased the lot at Tucker Road adjacent to the water tank and also in good proximity with the high-pressure zone over at 341 and the low-pressure zone there at Tucker Tank. So with these locations, this is good access and the best location for this water plant. As you know, the next topic here, basic selection of the best alternative, of course, I just mentioned the low and high-pressure zones. Also, the future demands to construct a new water plant and the two groundwater wells. The remote well site will be in this green area here, and the old side well will be in this small green area right behind Barber Calhoun Park. Of course, the water plant itself will be on this lot directly behind Barber Calhoun Park on Tucker Road. The Georgia Environmental Financing Authority Drinking Water State Revolving Fund is, has to be approved, has approved this site and will be paid for this project.
Lending the money.
Yeah.
That's lending the money.
Oh, lending the money. I'm sorry, lending the money.
They're still paying for it if we sign.
Yeah, we're paying for it.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Project also provides the best long-term plan for supplying the city's water, of course, as I mentioned. Environmental impacts. The site selected was also chosen because it minimized environmental, social disruption surrounding this area. Because of the land now, it will not be, will not require a lot of tree clearing, and there is a large buffer there to quieten the noise and lessen disruptions from locals. The engineering firm the city has appointed has addressed all thirty-five factors and has no significant adverse impacts to this site. Our worn-out facility there at the old water plant, of course, will be replaced by new modern equipment that will ease of maintenance and repair to our staff and enable the best cost of operation. Any inconvenience to residents during this construction will be minimized, and construction will occur during daylight hours, off-site, only in public right-of-way, and the finished project will be fenced, quiet, unobtrusive, and safe for the community. Population to be served. The projected project will serve existing customers, the City of Perry, plus at least some customers served by County Water that the city currently buys wholesale and orders to serve in. It establishes adequate capacities to meet long-term water demand projects. The expected life for this project is thirty to forty-plus years for the plant and at least twenty years for the wells and mechanical components. Financial impact to the users. The city will be able to pay for this project with existing rates without increase to be made separately for this project. At this time, I could take any questions or comments from the public, and again, if you need to review the environmental information document, I have that in my office or in the man.
Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray, I think that last statement you made is very significant. The fact that the financial impact to the existing work users will not go up based on the significant capital improvement that we are making here. We are going to be able to absorb this capital improvement and pay for it over time without raising fees. I think that is significant. The timing couldn't be better because we need an alternative to the existing plant that we have that we don't have now. Any questions from the public for Mr. McMurray? Any questions from council for Mr. McMurray? Thank you, sir. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak for this proposal to upgrade Thank you. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak against this proposal to Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Item eight is the review of minutes. Item eight A, counsel, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the August 14th, 2017 work session, the August 15th, 2017 three council meeting, the August 15th, 2017 council meeting, the August 21st, 2017 special meeting, and the August 22nd, 2017 special meeting. Please note that Councilmember Vaden Grace was absent from the August 14th work session. Counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented with the exception of Ms. Vaden Grace's absence. There's a motion and a second in the discussion. Changes to leashes. Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Any extensions? Ms. Vaden Grace, please, for the 14th, please let the record indicate Ms. Vaden Grace's statements for voting on the 14th work session given the recantance. The motion carries. Thank you. Item nine is old business. Item nine A, ordinances for the second reading and adoption. Item nine A one, this is the second reading of the ordinance amending the Perry Code by adding Section 18-36 in the list of places for which parking shall not be allowed for the following two additional places, Commerce Street from Macon Road to General Court behind this boulevard, and Washington Street from Commerce Street to Sam Dunn Boulevard. Chief Lin.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I think you basically covered it. It's the second reading to amend the no parking ordinance. I added those two amendments.
Do you think further from the police department?
No, sir. We have no issue.
Thank you, sir. This is the second reading at this time for adoption. Counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance that amends the Perry Code by adding Section 18-36 as described. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten is any other old business. Item ten A is any other old business from the mayor? I have none. Item ten B is any other old business from council members? Ms. Vaden Grace? Mr. Jones? Mr. Walker? Mr. Hunt? Mr. Jackson? Mr. King? Thank you. Item ten C is any other old business from the city manager? Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you. And item ten D is any other old business from the city attorney? Mr. Holden?
No.
Thank you. Item eleven is new business. Item eleven A are matters that have been referred from the September 5th, 2017 three council meetings. Philmore, is there any item that we need to address at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item eleven B are resolutions for consideration and adoption. Eleven B one, counsel, this is a resolution that authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Georgia Municipal Association for Telecommunications and Right-of-Wake Management Services. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, you have before you a resolution and also an agreement with the Georgia Municipal Association that will allow us to participate in their specialized program and assist us on negotiation with telecommunications companies as they come in and make different changes that they may want to do based on technology. And also, it provides a lobbying firm to help protect our franchise fee income, which is under assault both at the federal level and at the state level. And we would recommend to you that you approve the resolution and also the agreement subject to review by the City of Perry. Of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore at this time? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the agreement with the Georgia Municipal Association for Telecommunications and Right-of-Wake Management Service, subject to city attorney approval of the agreement itself. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven B two, counsel, this is a resolution reducing the water and sewer base fee. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, per your policy of constantly going back and reviewing fees and whether they are generating the income that is necessary, we have done that, and we're recommending to you to reduce the base fee for the water service.
From what?
Around four dollars to three hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have?
Yes, Vermont.
Vermont. Any member of council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this item? Hearing none. Counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution that reduces the water and sewer base fee as described. There's a motion. Is there a second? And a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven C is the order of bids. Eleven C one is bid number 2018-01. This is the construction of the Frank Satterfield Storm Drainage Improvements. Mr. McMurray.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and counsel. We have solicited to four companies, Georgia Water and Environmental Services, has reviewed the low bidder, which was with clay construction, and the bid for this project was $39,020.18. This is the stormwater improvements there at Frank Satterfield Road, and city staff recommends approval of this project.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Does any member of council have any questions of staff or Mr. McMurray concerning this project at this time? Mr. Gilmore, what is the source of funding for this project?
It's to be paid for in the stormwater utility.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we accept the Engineer Department's recommendation to award the bid to the low bidder of $39,020.18 to replace construction in Perry, Georgia. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven D, council will be asked to approve a radar list for the City of Perry. Chief Lin.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Mayor and counsel, this is a document from Georgia Department of Transportation, and it lists all the streets in the City of Perry where we are authorized by agreement to DOT to run speed enforcement by use of radar and IDAR. There are two changes that is what has actually dropped this list. I misspoke earlier in the three council that has brought this to us. We had asked them to review the speed limits on two streets. And so on State Route 11, which is also Macon Road 41 that runs in town near the intersection of Pine Hill, they've reduced that to fifty-five to fifty. Same with State Route 127 between the Gray Road and Lake George Road. So those are the two changes to the list, and we should need to have the government sign accepting those changes and it would remain a business of running speed protection on those roads.
Thank you, Chief. Does any member of council have any questions of Chief Lin concerning this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt or approve the radar list for the City of Perry as described by Chief Lin. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven E, this is the Ball Street and Tucker Road Emergency Sewer Rehab Change Order for an additional sewer line and a manhole replacement. Mr. McMurray.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and counsel. Okay. As you're aware, we have completed our Tucker, Ball Street sewer repairs, emergency repairs. In doing this project, we did some, completed some camera work with Georgia Water and Environmental Services, and in this area here, we have found several voids, and you'll see pictures here, under the asphalt, and part of it is extending to the corner of the building there. Manhole sixteen dash oh oh seven to sixteen oh oh eight was required to be replaced. The existing pipe, like I say, was under the corner of the building, and the large voids, which were also receiving a lot of eye on eye from this project.
Tell us what a void is.
A void is where there has been a collapse of the sewer line, and the dirt above that sewer line has fallen into and washed down straight, so there is a caddy underground. Let me, let's see, you can see here in this picture, this is actual camera footage taken, and in the, in the top of this is the top of the pipe where it is gone, and the dirt has collapsed down and washed down. See if we can have another photo. You can see this, this area here where the pipe has gone, this section, and then in this section too. This is pretty different pictures here. As you know, the K9 Clubhouse has a grand opening coming up, and this is right through their, our easement goes right through the back of their property and there's a couple of emergencies to get it repaired as quickly as possible. The Renee Group had completed the contract work out on Ball Street and Tucker in a reasonable, timely fashion. They also had won our previous bid for this project as low bidder and done an excellent job. So their change order was used on the line items that were received from the original bid. The change order totals $60,294 for the additional line abandonment, filling with drought and manhole replacement in this project, which was a pretty large project itself to bypass the old line abandoning and filling with drought. So city staff, of course, recommends approval from council to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. McMurray at this time? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the change order for the Ball Street and Tucker Road Emergency Sewer Rehab Change Order for an additional sewer line and manhole replacement in the amount of $60,294. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Gilmore, we have sufficient funds to pay this.
Uh, that's a question. I know that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven F is a special event application. Item eleven F one, a couple of dirks, that's the name of a business, by the way, is partnering with Perry Main Street Promotion Committee to host a classic car event downtown on Friday, November 11 from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Chief Lin.
Yes, sir. Mayor and counsel, the special event application has been reviewed by the police department and consulted with fire. We're good with the proposed plan. They're asking for council to approve closure of 708, 900 Block of Carroll, as well as journey between, journey between Commerce and Main and Ball between Commerce and Main. This is our standard closure around the old courthouse. The original application, it also asked for Washington to close, but after meeting with the gentleman, Bass Street's been removed. And I probably need to be here now, but he's not here. The, I think that's about it for the wood and stuff. It's an event we can stack and support safely.
Thank you, Chief Lin. Do we need to include the state request in here? Okay. Anything further, Chief Lin?
No, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, you have heard the request from the review by Chief Lin. You have seen the application, and this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the couple of dirks partnership with Perry Main Street Promotion Committee in hosting this classic car event on Friday, November 11 from 5:00 to 10:00 with the street closures as described by Chief Lin.
Mr. Mayor, could I make one correction? It should be Saturday, November 11.
Okay. Saturday, November 11. Thank you. Did anybody make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you agree to change from Friday to Saturday?
I agree.
Thank you. Now, did we have a second?
Second.
With the, with the.
Saturday.
Saturday. Thanks, sir. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Philmore, is there anything on item eleven new business that we need to address at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item twelve has already been addressed. Item thirteen, a council member, Ms. Vaden Grace? Mr. Jones? Mr. Walker? Mr. Hunt? Mr. Jackson? Mr. King? Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
And Mr. Holden?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item fourteen, the department head's staff items from the Department of Finance and Administration. Ms. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood?
No, sir.
From the Department of Economic Development, Mr. Smith?
One thing, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Perry Housing Team, great news for the City of Perry. As you are aware, the city was awarded a grant of $722,000 from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. It's a community development block grant that will be, that will go towards housing improvements in Sand Hill neighborhood. As you're aware, the city's been working for the past year in improving housing in that neighborhood, and this grant will allow us to continue that work in rehabilitating eight homes, reconstructing three homes, and actually clearing, clearing five dilapidated vacant structures. So again, this, this grant will be incredible. It will allow us to continue our work in the neighborhood. It will directly benefit seventy-seven people. And. It will directly benefit seventy-seven people, and of those seventy-seven people, seventy-one are actually lower to moderate income, which is the target demographic for city B grants. And we'll look for work to begin sometime in January on this grant, and if you have any questions about it, please contact me, Robert Smith, Perry Housing Team Leader, at four seven eight nine eight eight two seven five seven. Be happy to help you out, answer any questions you might have. It's another great day for the city of Perry. You know, bringing in outside dollars is always a great thing, and we look forward to getting working on it.
Very good news. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Very good news.
Superb, Robert.
Absolutely. From the Department of Leisure Services, Mr. Guy?
Always hard to follow my progress. Don't have anything anywhere to do.
He brings hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I really didn't hear that exciting a share, but I do have some funness. Our soccer and football seasons will officially start Saturday, September the sixteenth at nine A M. And I'm about to announce, you've probably seen on social media, if you haven't, be out there, basketball registration starts October sixteenth through the twentieth. Yeah, it's already that time. Other than, just please check our social media and our website, prices are going to be relatively close like they are every year, just as far as we run these programs, break even strategy, so try to keep the cost as minimal as possible. Basketball is our largest sport, and we had three hundred and thirty players last year. It's like the same, maybe a little bit more. So just ask everybody, if you have any questions, come talk to us, call us, email us, Facebook us. We love to have your children and look forward to having that sport for the season. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you. From the police department, Chief Lynn.
I think I've done enough.
Thank you, sir. From fire emergency services, Chief Parker?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. And from our media specialists, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council, just one quick thing. You should have received some information from me today on the park survey. Per your request, we went out and asked the public for their input on naming the two entryway welcome parks, the Thir Street site and the J C site. So you should have that information from me, and if you have any questions, just let me know.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. And from the office of the city clerk, Ms. Warren. Anything for us, come on.
No, sir.
Ms. Edson, anything from Perry Main Street?
Yes, I wanted to remind you all, we do have a tram tour coming up here at the first part of October. We still have some seats available, so if anybody is wanting to do that, please get in touch with me. We are already planning for Sweet and Treats on October thirty-first, and the car show on November eleventh, and we've already started meeting about Small Business Saturday on November twenty-fifth. So we've got a lot of activities coming up in addition to the fair. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McMurray, anything further?
No, sir.
You've been pretty busy. Thank you, sir. Item fifteen, the general public guidance. Is there any member of the general public who wishes to address council on any item Thank you. Item sixteen, the mayor items. Just a couple of dates. The Chamber has this business battlefield event Thursday at Fairbridge Park. There are numerous events scheduled for September the eleventh, which is this coming Monday. The city of, the three cities and the county typically get it together, and the city of Centerville is hosting a nine eleven remembrance service Monday, September eleventh at eight thirty, at the Centerville Law Enforcement Center on East Church Street in Centerville. And the Perry Music Festival is coming up a week from Saturday, called the sixteen, at Rogers and Tenure Park, beginning at noon or somewhere close to that. Our next regularly scheduled work session will be on the eighteenth of September at five P M. in this room. The next regularly scheduled pre-council meeting and council meeting will be on the nineteenth. The pre-council meeting is upstairs in the conference room, and the council meeting is in this room. Five o'clock and six o'clock respectively. That's all the announcements. For that, the only other item I have is I wanted to take one personal privilege. We just completed another session, if you will, for myself and these three members to my left, your right, for reelection. You may have seen in the paper. If you have not, no one qualified against myself or any one of these individuals. I wanted to personally thank the citizens of Perry, speaking for myself, for the confidence that is shown of the cause of that. We don't please everybody, that's not our goal, but we do think that we are headed in the right direction, and it is a very humbling experience for me for, for that not to happen, if you will, from that standpoint. I am looking very much forward to serving the citizens of Perry and working with these men and women, inclusive of the staffs and employees of the city of Perry, to continue the stellar service that we give and to support our staff administration in the, in the efforts that they are putting forth every single day in order to keep the city of Perry where it is, and that's a step above and ahead of everybody else. It doesn't happen by accident, and sometimes myself and, in fact, council needs to get out of the way so that our staff can get the job done, and y'all do a pretty good job of telling us when we do get in the way, and we appreciate that from that standpoint. But in all seriousness, it is very humbling for me, and I thank you for giving me this opportunity to serve the citizens for another four-year term, and I look forward to it. Would y'all like to say anything? Ms. Vaden Grace?
Well, as a public servant, I was willing to ensure we were going in the right direction, and I just hope that they would see that the service that I was providing for our citizens was in the best interest of all, and I want to thank them for sending me back over here.
I like all your comments, Mayor, that this is very humbling to realize you do have the confidence of the people that you represent. I'm very thankful for that, and I'm humbled by that, and I look forward to the next term of the conference even more on behalf of the citizens that we all represent, and I will say even more I would manage to perform in doing it alongside the people on this campaign. Something that does set us apart, as you said, Mayor, is the respect that Mayor and Council have for one another. We are not perfect, we do make mistakes, and sometimes we disagree, and God forbid, vote against one another. But even with that, at the end of the day, we still care for one another, and I think that matters, and I think that represents the values of the people of the city of Perry and are a part of it. That's all.
Well, I just want to, I don't know what you said, it's been a rewarding eight years, I'm certainly in my eighth year, and I've never worked with a group of people who really have the city of Perry at, having the best interests. There is a very proactive nature about this group, along with the city manager, of us focusing on the things to do that is in the best interest of our constituents. It's, like you said, a very humbling experience to do that and move the city of Perry forward. I would like to correct the record, though, that I am not running or have no plan for an office in Centerville, as the paper has reported, but I didn't know I could serve in two different jurisdictions. I'm proud to serve in the city of Perry.
We're not giving you up that easy. Guys on this end of the table, you're stuck with us for y'all's terms another two years, or at least the next two years, and I don't apologize for that because, as his argument says, we do work well together. We don't always agree from that standpoint, and that's as it should, but I think we have a, we have a good thing going. The citizens of Perry have a good thing going, and we want to make certain that we continue all of those efforts as we have in the past and moving forward. And I too thank you again, Mr. Gilmore, Mr. Holden, the department heads, the staff, the employees. Y'all make our job very easy. Because you do it right, you do it right the first time. When you don't, you come to us with the issues, and we try very hard to take all the perspectives into consideration and give guidance where it's needed from that standpoint, and we thank you for the job that you continue to do. If y'all want to say anything, I don't leave anybody out. It's nice. That's it. Thank you. No, thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. This, this is, means we can have a win. And for cause of that, it is a matter of note, but it is significant. There's three things that have happened here, and by operation of state law, Mr. Holden, the way I understand it, there's no opponents or incumbents, number one. Number two, there are no, there were no write-in candidates that had qualified. And number three, there are no referendums on the ballot that would have been on the ballot for this particular election in November, and because those three things are true, state law says that each incumbent will have been deemed to have voted for themselves because that's a requirement to get elected. And once that is put into place, then there will be no election. So there will not be a city election this November because of that, and because of what we have been talking about up here, that saves the city some money. We contracted with the county, Houston County, to conduct our elections with a board of elections, and we, our bank will ensure they are as well, that there will be no city election this November. Again, I thank you. If there's nothing else to come before us, we stand adjourned. Thank you for your interest in participating.